...stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Present.
Egley.
Here.
Klepper.
Here.
Martin and Arthur absent.
Before you, um, March the twentieth, regular council meeting minutes, and Chancellor look them over for your approval.
Make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Yes.
Klepper.
Stand.
Egley.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
You have before you the bills. Any questions?
On the, uh, having energy for sludge disposal, and then we also have ZTH trucking for sludge hauling. So, the trucking company just ran it all over.
Yes.
Any idea how many loads that was?
Uh, that's just one load of five thousand gallons, I believe.
One blue tank still on the floor?
It's maybe three quarter, but with the nicer weather, they can get the drying beds cleaned out. We're still trying to get a couple of local farmers to take that sludge from us.
Six mil. What was that contract value?
Two thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. I'm assuming they set up billing schedule, so this is like, our deliverables were basically up to submission to the health department stuff, or?
That's.
Is that just sort of time, is this sort of just time and material up to them?
Pretty much time and material.
And that's coming out of the capital projects budget?
That's coming out of the.
The design?
No, the, uh, permanent improvement fund, that, where had the six hundred and fifty thousand in there?
Okay, yeah, that's right. So, at what point in this process do we need to actually start shopping loans?
Soon as, soon as we get, uh.
Construction cost?
Yep.
Is that the bid in July? Is that?
No, we don't have really anything, uh, actually set in stone when to go to bid. Sooner the better. But we're still kind of tweaking some designs and, you know, amenities that the pool house and stuff will have, and what options the pool will have, and heated, not heated, and. So, we're not, we're, I think we're close. We meet again tomorrow.
Okay. So, at what point, um, do we anticipate being able to have that budget number?
I'm hoping another month. Another month.
Okay. And then for questions on the bills?
I make most pay those. Second?
Sure. Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Egley.
Yes.
Klepper.
Okay, next.
Sorry, I didn't make sure that Jewish wasn't there. Yes.
You ready?
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Uh, next on the agenda, notice a public hearing, April the twentieth, at five P M. in the office of the zoning inspector, to discuss a lot split application at four oh two South Bryan. I think it's in your packet. Explain that, so. Any questions on that?
They just taken off that seven to four foot strip?
Yeah, it's one, I, yep, four foot of it, right, yeah.
It's about seven on one end, four on the other.
Yep. Oh, yeah. I didn't notice the other end.
It's like, I think, of existing property, I think there's like a property encouragement or something like that in that area, so if I recall, that's what the situation is.
So, only that meeting's April the twentieth. Board of Commissions, no meetings were scheduled or minutes, unless somebody's got something to report on it. Council committee reports, no meetings. Didn't any committees meet? Okay. Uh, administrators' report in the packet, if you want to.
Sure.
Over that?
Um, the only thing really that's changed from what I put on here Friday was, for the pool house, was originally scheduled to go to demo April tenth. As of today, we are actually going to postpone that till May fifteenth. Once we got digging around, we realized that the track, the high school track, is all powered from that pool. So, we met, Eric and I met with A E P. last Friday, and went over options to get power to the track. And they're talking about setting poles and going underground. I mean, it's very expensive, but it would be just temporary for this year. Or they'd run off a generator, or we would just wait about a month until their track season was over, to kind of do them a favor, and then we would just go to demo the fifteenth. I reached out to the contractor, because he had some equipment reserved for that week. He's okay with going, um, back a month. Spoke with A E P. They will be there to disconnect the tenth or the eleventh of next month. They're good to go. Spoke with the engineering firm, and it shouldn't affect us at all, because we are already a few months ahead of schedule, because they, when we first got going with the pool, they were under the assumption that we were opening the pool this season. So, they really weren't even expecting anything to be demoed until like September. So, we're plenty enough ahead there. So, yeah, May fifteenth will be the, the date, and it may even start the week before, Thursday or Friday before, to demo it.
How'd you catch that? The power from the pool?
Well, we started turning stuff on, getting things ready for baseball, because there's a breaker in there labeled baseball dugout, and then we start talking about, seeing a breaker in there labeled track, and come to find out that powers from the south, I think it's kind of considered southwest corner of the concession building, I guess you could say, for the track, that storage building. And then they run power over from that building to the press box, and so all that power comes from the pool. And, uh.
Wow.
So, timing system, intercom, I mean, they would have had to cancel all their home track meets, and they were just going to relocate them if, if it couldn't be done.
Good catch.
Yeah, so.
Who would pay for a generator if that was used?
The village, or the school, I mean, the school was going to pay for it.
Could we use a generator and stay, stay on course?
I already think we're everything, got everything backed up to the fifteenth now. We got five home track meets.
So, have you guys put together a permanent power plan?
I called A E P. today, uh, because I talked with Stacy Agler and Michael Greenwald last Friday, and they were looking at temporary options, and they said, uh, if we have demo and if we can't delay it, uh, the only thing that they would recommend would be a generator, because they're not going to have time to get it done this track season. And especially for permanent, because all the locations for temporary power was going to be overhead, over by the parking lot, where Cory plans on possibly expanding that. Because I said, well, if we're going to pay for all this, and directional board, all four inch line underground, all the wiring, I said, that's a lot of money for, you know, five home track meets, and, uh, they said, if we can't delay it, uh, I would call in and do something for permanent service in the future. So, today, they, they called and just said, call in and put a service order ticket in. So, I spoke with him today, right around lunchtime, and put a ticket in for permanent power, which they'll have to pull power off of one of the poles, the transformers, on the north side of the track, along that drive, ones by the pavilion, ones a little bit closer to the water tower. They were looking into legalities, if they can go overhead above a running track, or if that all had to be directional board. Uh, so they're looking into like, legalities of that, and the best, best way to go, especially with Cory's expansion, possibly the parking lot. So, they were looking into, but they said, uh, can't really start anything for the engineering part until I put a service ticket in, so that's been, that's been done.
Can come off of, uh, the power along Main Street?
On Bryan, or on Main. Oh, that's, that'd be a lot farther away.
Aren't you talking that lot, that, uh, high school?
Not baseball.
The track.
The track.
Oh, the track. Oh.
Baseball, the baseball, uh, that's all village-owned property, so that's not school-owned.
Okay, okay. Gotcha.
Okay. Sounds like you got a plan, so that's good.
Uh, brush pickup, we'll be on brush pickup all this week. The trees across from City Hall, we talked about where we're going to mark off for the truck unloading. Those trees all got trimmed today. And once we get good, uh, warm weather, then we'll get everything hashed out. We'll get the line down the center of the road, and signs installed for the, uh, truck unloading zone. Uh, Froggy Park, the basketball goals have all come down. We ended up scrapping them out. Anyone like to see the few pictures of the kind of condition they were in up close? Uh, they will be here tomorrow. Playground World Out of Toledo will be here to get the new holes dug, everything framed up for the concrete. They'll get it all concreted for the new poles, and then roughly a week after that, they'll be. Is the anticipated repair on the North Main sewer. Hold that new power pole while they're doing that work. Like I said, they'll be down to one lane of traffic, and I'm hoping this will be done in no more than three hours, so. Other than that, that's all I got.
On that loading zone, would it make sense to stripe the, to stripe center before you go through and remove those parking spaces, and just see if that fixes things, just because traffic typically migrates left?
We could. I mean, we could.
Spaces.
Yeah, I mean, we could do either or. I was planning on doing like a double line. I'd like to see like a double line around the center of the road, rather than just a single one. But we could do that as well.
I'd be curious to see how that affects things, just because most people, you know, migrate way left anyway. Obviously. And a lot of people park on there to go up that way, so we don't have to lose those spots for, for delivery zone. I think it'd be wise, but just a thought.
Yeah. I mean, I'm up. Um, real quick, the sludge tanks that we're working on, the one, the east one out to sewer plant, uh, we got confirmation that, uh, the parts for that should be shipped on the seventeenth, and they're all coming out of Mexico for that. Um, there is a local contractor, uh, F L Q. They're out there by the school, they're on forty-nine. Uh, he came in at fifty-two hundred dollars to go down to Mexico to pick all these, all the piping and everything up and truck it back. Bergren was like sixty-two hundred, so Dan's like a thousand dollars cheaper, so he's got the, the bid on that to go down there and pick up all of our material. Once all, all that gets here, it'll be all hands on deck, get that tank up and going.
Question for you, Cory. Um, back in, I think it was January, uh, you had, uh, turned a bill in for a water tower, parts for a water tower, and I said, where?
Probably still in Louisville. I mean, we can't go back on a contract when they, I mean, once they got the material, we, we owed them the money. Doesn't say anything about being on, on the job site itself.
Now, that's just, that's just common, how, how construction works, once it's on site. Okay.
Anything else, Cory?
They did get one of the, one of the legs, the foundation for one of the legs poured today out there for the water tower, so they'll be on that every day until all those legs are, are, foundations are poured. And I think the twenty-ninth, they're scheduled to start putting steel up, so. Other than that.
Chipper working out?
Excellent.
Good timing.
Yes, I think it chips very well.
Okay. Any other questions for Cory? Okay. Solicitors' report.
I just have two things. First one's Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three. First reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the sale of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit village personal property, including by internet auction for the calendar year twenty twenty-three. That's just a regular thing that we do.
Okay.
And then Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four, resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in twenty twenty-three, and Cheryl, um, had this, we put this together as a, as an emergency, but we don't have enough people here tonight. So, at the next meeting, we're going to have to try and do it that way, because, uh, there's a deadline.
Right.
May first.
May first is the deadline, so that, uh, we can do that, so we can participate.
Any other, that's all you have?
Yes.
What's the status on the Spencervale, Spencervale Street alley vacate?
I just was talking to Cory about it today, that. I guess, I mean, I can bring a resolution to do it. I, the one thing I didn't know is if everybody's, we can't vote on it, obviously, but if there's any, because I have heard some people maybe voice. Potentially, or whatever. Resolution, they submitted an application to vacate that. It's not an alley, it's actually right-ofway. Oh, okay. Yeah, it's not an alley, it's, uh, you know, we were talking about, uh, what would have been a back entrance to the park there off of Spencervale.
Spencervale in Chicago.
Where the sidewalk goes across?
There's.
Yeah, it's driveway there now.
Two houses.
Oh.
Oh.
Down on, down towards town end of it, down there towards where Hook's house was, is.
No, back this way.
Yes, this way from Hook's.
I thought it was by that empty lot.
Try it next to an empty lot.
Right next to the lot, and then there's an easement, and then there, I don't know who lives there now, but the Hook girls all grew up there.
But they, yeah, the, the property owners on either side of it did submit a request to have it vacated, so, um, I could bring that, I can bring that to the next meeting or whatever, if you want to, um, consider that. I just didn't know if anybody had any questions.
Guess we can discuss it then. You have more?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Question on that. If we vacate right-ofway, is, can we vacate right-ofway and hold on the lot?
Hold on to what?
Hold on to that ground, or does it just get?
No, that, then it gets, half of it'll go to this property owner, and half of it'll go to that property owner, if you vacate it.
Do we have to do that, or can we basically?
We could sell it.
That's what I'm asking. So, it's a buildable lot, essentially, if they, if the right-ofway is vacated.
You're only going to have like, maybe ten feet to the side of that next other house. It's, you know, we don't build on that little.
Well, that, if you take the driveway to the house and put it back on the house's property, it's a buildable lot.
I think they, I don't think they could get a driveway next to that house.
I guess, is, is that an option?
I would think the two options would be to do nothing or to vacate it. I mean, if you think it's necessary for right-ofway, or may be necessary in the right-ofway, for right-ofway, then you do nothing. If you think it's just, I don't know, we have somebody that mows it or something, I don't even know.
I, I mean, the people that own that lot.
Didn't have voted.
I don't know, year, year and a half, whatever.
Right.
I mean, the village does not mow it.
The village doesn't.
Next council meeting, discuss, or you want to discuss, get a little more information on?
No, I mean, I can do it. I mean, they submitted a request, and I can, you know, bring the resolution, and people can talk about it, and we can, you know, do whatever, and if somebody.
Get a little more information, so.
Nobody makes a motion to. Doesn't pass.
Then it stays in the right-ofway.
That's the answer, then it just stays right-ofway.
Everybody okay on that? Any other questions for Troy? Okay, thanks. Department has, please chief.
Well, you have, uh, should have calls for service and monthly caseload for March. So, uh, Friday, we had a, uh, our building was, uh, driven into the side of the building, so we have a nice little hole in our wall.
Potentially or unintentionally?
Unintentionally. So, hit the gas instead of the brake. Moved the inside wall, probably a couple of feet, so we'll be getting around, getting some estimates. Uh, have one coming tomorrow.
Is there an insurance driver dead?
We don't know yet.
Yes.
They did.
I spoke with the deputy today.
Well, he provided proof of insurance for the car, but she was not on the insurance, so we don't, we're hoping that it'll be covered, so.
What did the deputy get?
He just said that they had insurance, but we didn't, he didn't know what's specific.
But he also told us that she was not on the insurance policy, and she just got her permit the day before. So, we don't know. I guess that'd be something Conrad will have to.
Yeah, he just said to.
Look into.
Go out and get estimates.
Yeah, so, so I'll be contact, contacting.
Is this the same area that we just got fixed? Since you've been doing some remodeling inside.
It's, uh, well, yeah, they'll.
Painting and what else?
Do you remember?
We painted and.
No.
Yeah, it's going to have to be redone.
You hit the lobby, before you walk in, to talk to Julie, that lobby. They moved down the bay.
So.
The third one go down by the garage.
So, the other thing I'd, I'd like to, uh, start talking, uh, we still need, uh, to get with enterprise on this fleet deal with the automobiles. Uh, I know the finance committee has heard, uh, the spiel, uh, but I'd like to have maybe him even do it for the, the whole council, or just Cheryl. The reason I want to is because I just took, uh, the white S U V in, the two thousand fifteen in today, because it had low oil pressure light, uh, it's a cutting unit, but they discovered the water pump is leaking, and it's going to be twenty-one hundred dollars to fix it.
Put a water pump on?
Yeah, it's ten hours of labor. I checked with, uh, Bob's Auto, and they did not want to take on the job due to the hours that involves and the special tools. So, they said they would recommend that the shipments do it, so. But I would like to get, get that done to see where we're at for next year. So, whatever you guys want to do, I guess, on that, if you, because I believe he said he would present to the council. So, I guess that's for you guys to decide, so.
It would be nice to be came in, let's all know what's going on. If his representative for that would come in and tell us all what was going on.
That might be a good idea.
Do we want to do it, like, see if we can do it at a council meeting? Would that be?
It would work best.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll, uh, get ahold of him tomorrow and, and see what works best for him. We'll do that at council meeting. Uh, we had some storm damage and stuff, uh, here, uh, Friday night, last week. I saw today, uh, nine-one-one center, uh, hooked us up with, uh, because we have hyper reach here in town, so they actually said there, there is a way to connect our Facebook, uh, account to hyper reach, so we did that today. So, you should be able to see weather alerts, uh, that come from the National Weather Service. It'll come directly to our Facebook page. There'll be new alerts and even cancellations of alerts, so. I don't think I have anything else.
Did the tornado siren go off Friday night? Do you know?
Yes.
I couldn't hear it where I live, but.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, we're fortunate, after looking at Harlan.
How do, how do you determine when that goes off?
They get alerts, all right? So, the other night, I got. Uh, they, and they get an alert, and they automatically set those off, so.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief?
Am I reading this right? That there were seven structure or electrical fires last month?
Could, yeah, there'd be a fire run, yeah, that we probably responded to.
Five, five structure fire, or is that each individual responder?
No, that's how many we responded to.
And then two fire, and then two electrical fires?
Yeah. So. We just had a house fire, uh, Friday afternoon. So, that was probably one of them, so down on Indian Street, so.
Do we, do we have an ordinance that says once the house is burned and passed repair, that, that it has to be tore down?
Fire chief can condemn.
Yeah, the fire, yeah. I believe that's, falls under the fire chief, because didn't they just do that with, uh, Bono and Smith?
I believe that was condemned.
Condemned, yeah.
Yeah.
Couldn't we do that on Chicago Avenue? I think it comes under the nuisance board. We've already played with it for.
Well, I know that, so I know that, well, like with, uh, they'll be in a state house.
Yeah.
It was Scott's determination that.
If it's a danger, though, it can't just be that it looks nasty or whatever, it's got to be a public danger. Not one, it was like sliding out into the rug.
Yeah, the sign.
Afraid that it was going to fall out into the roadway when they made the decision to do it. And there's all that business.
Chief does have the authority to condemn a property, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Fire department, park interim chief.
I really don't have anything, but you should have a sheet that's colored for you. If you look up on EMS, run six, that's to this date today. All these numbers are today's dates. It's been run. So, we're on a pace, a pretty good pace on EMS again, so. Any questions? I don't have anything for you. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thanks. Park director, anybody on the committee, Cory, you probably know, it's starting to fire up down there.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, they've been putting their time in. We are, I am in the process of, um, replumbing, uh, the stools and urinals and stuff down there at the boys concession stand, and, um, also in the process of relamping all the interior lights there to, switching them over to L E D. That was all budgeted, so you guys know. So, but, uh, I think their first baseball practice is tomorrow down there for Little League and Pee-wee and everything, so things are rolling.
And the grass is greening up, so it won't be long. Have to be mowed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions about the park? Okay. Fiscal officer, Cheryl?
You have the fund status and the cash summary, and also they were on the ball, and you have the utility and income tax for the month of March. They got them to me early.
Questions for? Fire department, got a couple of things. Got a letter. Electric rates are going to go up twenty-eight percent come first of June, twenty-eight percent. If you use a thousand kilowatts, it'll be, and right now, it's a hundred and fifty-five dollars for a thousand, and that'll go up to a hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And I got a letter from them. They do an auction, so this is what they have to pay for, and then they can pass it on to the customers. So, I'm not going to say too much, except green energy, I think we paying for it, maybe? But anyway, it's going to go up twenty-eight. But anyway, it's gonna go up 28%.
I read that correctly. I think that only affects the direct AEP customers, correct? So, like if you're contracted through a third party.
But I figure theirs are gonna go up too.
Eventually, yeah, eventually, but I think, I think your contract price is, the way I read that.
Yeah, I, that's correct, but most people go through AEP, right?
A lot of people, once the market deregulated, a lot of people use third, third-party purchasing agreements and.
Yeah.
And then you're locked into your contract ends, but when you go to renew that, your rate's gonna be a lot higher than what you're currently locked in at.
It's coming.
Yeah.
Because I'm signed up with AEP, so I don't mind what, so that's what's coming. So, that's the bad news. I had a meeting today with the county commissioners and different people from the county. A year from now, I think it's April the 4th, 2024, there's gonna be a total eclipse in this area. So, the county, we're going, right now, we're gonna meet once a month now and then in a few months, we're gonna meet every other month and then every week. But we're right in line for the total eclipse, so it's gonna get total dark. It'll take 10 minutes to travel across the state of Ohio. It all depends where you're at. And see what else. Here's, here's the facts. This is amazing. Ohio is within a one-day drive of 70% of the US population, so they expect a lot of people to come in. Could double, triple people coming in for a couple of days. There'd be extreme demand for hotels, campsites, entertainment facilities, parks, and et cetera. Portage Johns will be in short supply, you know, that's a problem. Potential is there for local income generation, so I, I can see it now. T-shirt says Hicksville. I witnessed the eclipse in Hicksville, so Cory, you gotta, I can see the clogs are turning up. There'll be a lot of people here and I recommend going to the website. 24th, the total eclipse, and it'll tell you all about it.
When is it, April 4th?
You what?
April 4th.
April.
April 4th. The night the lights went out in Hicksville.
Yeah. So, anyway. So, I, I think that would sell some t-shirts. So, potential for the income. But it's, where else did I have some other information I was gonna tell? Maybe that's all I have.
That was a total or near total when I was a kid.
Well, I don't know if, did it turn dark? Anyway, this is the, the stats that I got. The last one in Ohio was in 1806.
I wouldn't know. That's when Ron was a kid.
And there's only been 15 visible in US since 1867, only 15. The last one was in 2017, visible in parts of Kentucky. The last one in North Amer, this will be the last one in North America until the year 2044. And the next one in Ohio will be 2444.
I'm gonna miss that one.
You'll miss that one. So, anyway, the county's really gearing up. You had a partial, you know, you'd look in a glass.
Yeah.
On the outside, but it's supposed to get, that's literally get dark.
That's what we had when I was a little kid, but you could look at it through a well.
There was a larynx, that was just a couple, couple of years ago.
Yeah, that's the one I think you need the helmet for.
No, no, no. There was a partial solar eclipse a couple of years ago here. It was a partial, this is like a total one. We like caught the edge last time.
Is that what it was?
Yes.
Just like.
Because you have to have the special glasses, yeah.
But this is gonna be total darkness.
Yes.
So, but people travel all over the United States, just the witnesses, so they're expecting a lot of people, so.
We've already started planning meetings.
Yeah, you had one for, we had one today.
Yeah, we went to Pauling and had a meeting.
So, you have anything to add to it? It's gonna be huge, don't you think?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna start planning, we're having our first meeting.
Is it like just Defiance County or the whole state?
No.
Just a strip?
It's gonna, it's gonna traverse across the state of Ohio for like about 10 minutes. And you will need to either have an indirect way of watching or you'll need to invest in. So, some of the people around here want to start carrying the, the safety rated glasses to be able to watch a solar eclipse. Because with the total eclipse, if you watch with your naked eye, the corona around it is so bright that you can't permanently damage your eye in just like 10 or 15 seconds, so.
But anyway, so strip, roughly 24 counties will be affected. And it won't last long, but they think people come in for the weekend and get their spot.
I'm sure they got a good spot to toss it, yeah?
Sure. So, anyway, that's, that's coming.
Put on an eclipse counter or some.
You don't want to have daylight yesterday on the day of the solar eclipse.
Yeah, so anyway, a year from now. Everybody get this invitation for the annual CIC meeting? You did? Okay.
No, not that one.
Okay, it's.
I read it in the Herd in.
Okay, it's April the 14th over in Defiance. It's a breakfast in Defiance, you know, all the councilmen are invited since we're investors. 9:30 to 10:30. So, let me know and I can put your name in. I'm gonna be there. No cost, free breakfast, so. But just let me know.
Speaking of doing things like that, are we hearing anything about this building?
I haven't got enough data since the last, the last meeting, yeah. They're still hashing out the.
Just move the tower from the tower.
And there's some other issues about some lines that are along the roadway that are buried, trying to dig out.
To accommodate them with those.
Yeah.
The Easter egg hunt is this Saturday. Cory, you wanna kind of, you got 16 bikes you're giving away?
We'll give away 16 bikes, be raffles and registration starts at 11:30. Hunt is from 1 to 2 and at 12 o'clock is when all the raffles and stuff happen. And then the, the bike giveaway is, the Easter egg hunt itself will be at the Little League fields. Each age group will be on their own field. And then after that, everything gets shifted over to the pavilion, the Rotary Pavilion. Food and drinks and different things that it has to do and all that young activity will be set up over there as well. Couple of years ago was our largest and we had, it was like 533 kids. It ranged from, we'll say, maybe 180, except for that like, so it's really hard telling. The weather's supposed to be, the weather's supposed to be very nice, so, but it is what Easter weekend, so.
So, how many years is this?
Then this will be here, so. Well, thanks for your, your life and whatever, kind of help, I just don't know. I'm certain that she, she doesn't want to start to call us, so. Um, I think my wife said we're close to 30,000, unless she wants to hear that. The Lifeline Connect Church, they're up there, nature center behind the SMTA, they have their congregation and just random towns. People will show up there, provide pizza and spend 23 hours on Wednesday nights just to put candy in.
One thing, thank you. Anything needs to be brought forward?
I got, I got some more here. I wanted to mention that Lucas Brown, he works down at the wastewater treatment plant. His last day is April 14th. He's leaving us. That position has been posted on a couple of different websites. It's been on Indeed. We're getting quite a few inquiries on it. It was amazing. Joel and I do have a few in this room tomorrow morning with a pretty good prospect, so we'll see how that goes. I was down there a couple of days and there were like covers over the dry beds. We've seen them before, those bags, bag bags. I just don't go down. Those bags have been in those beds for, are they in them? So, not quite a year.
And we've been having difficult difficulty with that. So, anybody knows any other farmers around the area?
Is that based on the paperwork they have to fill out? Are they, they're just not interested in filling out the paperwork?
They're, they're interested, but they're, I'm having difficulty in them getting back with me.
Okay.
I've contacted one five times.
Okay.
I got the initial paperwork back, but I reached out to them at least three or four more times after the fact because EPA wants more detail. It, it's, it's very difficult, the land application process, and I think that's why a lot of them steer away from it. So, they want details on every last field, soil samples. I have all the soil samples for every single field, but they want crop percentage, different types of crops, elevations. They want latitude, longitude, just a bunch of different information. So, he has like 12 different fields that he has to fill out for. And I'm still waiting for a response. And I did message him again last week, no response, so we'll see how that goes. Another prospect out of town, haven't heard anything back from him. I've sent hour results from our sludge to him, so I'm assuming if he wanted it, he would've got back with me. So, but that's the difficulty behind that. In the meantime, we will be hauling out probably Werler to get some of that cake out of those beds because we have to make room for what's in that west digester. Once we get the east one fixed, the west one has to be dumped and we'll kind of flip flop back and.
Okay, thanks for the update.
It's ongoing progress, you know?
It sounds like getting rid of the slugs is what we're used to test for. Get rid of than, than cows and chickens and.
It's, it's difficult. Before, I mean, the whole planet rises and falls on how well you can get rid of your livestock, you know? And so, if you can't get rid of it, your plant struggles. We're getting by through the winter to make do, but you're right, I mean, it's, it's difficult. So, and that's why for the time being, I'm gonna go to landfill until I can find somebody to pick up this.
Is the landfill doing a preferred rate for you?
It's been a handful of months since I've spoke with them. Werler by far has given us the best rate, so that's why I want to go through them. And then it's a toss-up between Defiance County and the landfill in Brian.
You would think that that would be a, a good for, for their cover to, to get the vegetation growing, you know, on their final cover.
You, you would think.
Yeah.
Yes. There's only specific fields they can spread on during each time of the year. And it all depends on the weather, too. So, spring is kind of wet, so it depends on how and if they want to get out on this.
Right, right, right.
So, I'll be working hard along with putting that digester back together, trying to get somebody to take it. So, there's a lot of things lined up for April, May, June, through the whole year. We'll be busy through the whole year.
Has, has anybody talked to the drying company that started out there? They were interested.
Sorry, talking about? Yeah, they will not take it.
Okay.
They will not take that.
They seemed interested when they first came to town.
Yeah, we, gosh, how long ago has it been when we called Empire Care? It's, gosh, it's been a couple of months. It was, it might've even been at the end of 2022.
Oh, yeah, probably at least, yeah. That was the great one they first got here, yeah.
That's why we've been taking it to Havland Energy, because they have their anaerobic digestion plant there. And we just, we haul out 28,000 gallons at a time, try and get us by.
What about the cement plant? They burn everything over there.
You have to send it to a NPDS facility. They have to have a discharge permit. So, like Havland, they have a way of processing their sludge. We can't give it to a cement company, so. It's kind of like, I've reached out to a farmer that had a completely dry, nothing in it, not a pond, but it was a. Lost my train of thought, what? It was a.
Reservoir for bonding?
No. What am I thinking of? Anyways, because he doesn't have a permit to take that, he can't take it. So, I reached out to the EPA and I reached out to that farmer. His name's Roger Zedeich. I reached out to him and I said if, I mean, I think it was Roger.
Yeah.
If, if the process was simple enough, would you be interested?
Roger pumps all over this discounting.
He, he seemed interested enough, but the EPA never got back with me. So, and I, I reached out to Roger probably three weeks ago. Again, I never heard a call back from him, so. I'm doing my due diligence to try and get a hold of him.
All we can do is try.
If you, everybody else knows any other prospects around the area, I'm willing to listen.
Okay, thank you, Joel. For this council.
Is there an age limit on winning one of those bicycles?
I think 12 is the oldest.
You're out of bounds.
I make motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.